All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the meeting of the Cloverdale City Council. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:02. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record reflect, all council members are present. There's nothing to report out on closed session. Does anyone have any conflict of interest declarations? Seeing none, any changes or deletions to the agenda?
No changes.
Thank you. We'll move into public comments. Any person wishing to speak in person on an item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes is typically allotted to each speaker. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move right into proclamations. D1, Women's Equality Day proclamation.
A proclamation of the city council of the city of Cloverdale declaring August 26, 2025, Women's Equality Day in Cloverdale. Whereas on August 26, 2025, we mark the 105th anniversary of the enactment of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, which secured the right to vote for women. And whereas in 1976, the Sonoma County Board of Supervisors established one of the first commissions on the status of women in the state of California with the purpose of promoting equal rights and opportunities that enhance the quality of life for all women and girls, and addressing issues of discrimination and prejudice that negatively affect women in Sonoma County. And whereas, women now constitute nearly 50% of our workforce, the majority of the students in our colleges and graduate schools, and an increasing number of primary sources of income. And whereas, in 2024 and 2025, Sonoma County women working full-time earned 86% of what men earned, and those women working in agriculture and service areas, such as the majority of women workers in Sonoma Valley, earned even less. And whereas, even with the gains that women have made, work remains to be done in many areas that directly impact equal pay for equal work, including access to quality, affordable childcare, affordable housing, and comprehensive healthcare for women, including reproductive and mental healthcare. And whereas, the mandate for Women's Equality Day in 2025 is to accelerate efforts to eliminate systematic barriers and biases that impede women's progress, emphasizing the need for swift and decisive measures to achieve gender equity. Now, therefore, be proclaimed that Mayor Lands and the city council of the city of Cloverdale do hereby declare August 26, 2025, as Women's Equality Day in Cloverdale, marking the 105th anniversary of the enactment of the 19th Amendment, celebrating the achievements of women and recommitting to gender equality in the city of Cloverdale, including equal pay for equal work, and accelerating the overall progress of women and girls. Dated August 27, 2025.
Thank you, council member. Tonight, we're supposed to have Gina Fortino Dixon from the Sonoma County Commission on the Status of Women here to accept the award. However, she has COVID and had to cancel last minute. So Gina, if you're watching, I hope you get better, and thank you for always being willing to come up here and accept this. Anyone else have any comments or? We'll move on to F, the consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the city council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Are there any items that want to be pulled?
Yeah, yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull F2.
F2, got it. Anyone else? Anyone in the audience have any items they'd like to pull off this calendar? Seeing none, do we have a motion for F1, 3, 4, and 5?
Motion for F1, 3, 4, and 5 in the consent calendar.
I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Let's move on to F2. F2 is consider approving a resolution to amend the budget to increase the authorized expenditure of PEG funds for public meeting audiovisual equipment in an amount of $66,227. Do you want to talk first?
Yeah, I would just like to go over the proposals. On the consent calendar, we have a numerical value for $66,227. And then the quote doesn't really, maybe I missed it, but I don't see where that, that number was all-inclusive. I have the comparison that we had from our previous contractor that sent us a quote. It looks like there, we have one for $45,218.45, and then we have one for $49,049. And then we have, so I don't know where the 66,000. Kevin, can you explain why?
25% contingency.
No, on this one, partially, the council, when we presented it back in June, I believe, you wanted the ability to utilize the entirety of our PEG funds. We can't just put that, we have to put that in numbers because we have to put what's left. So the balance is that 60-something thousand. We already had five utilized. We only get about 12 to 18 a year, is that correct, Suzy? 18 to 20 a year is what we get annually. But we can't put on a budget amendment that we can just use the full amount of the balance because we might get 18 grand at the end of this next fiscal year. So we had to put 66, so that would be the remaining balance after we use the 40.
Is that the balance in the PEG funds now, 66?
If that is the balance, not including what we already have budgeted for this year.
Okay, so 66 will remain after we make a decision on this? Is that what I'm hearing?
There'd be about 25 or 21 would be the remaining.
There is a contingency built in too. That's not covering all of the amount, but the amount of the quote is 40, 45.
And you have a, what's your contingency that you put on this? It's 20%, right?
I think it's 25 on this.
It's 25%?
So that's bringing that number up.
And that extra 20 grand because this is particularly involved with the audio portion of the audiovisual. There's a lot of cables and things that we're going to be rechanging. Some of the things that this quote has that the other one didn't are our own standalone speakers. We want to officially isolate ourselves from CPAC's tech other than the general lighting of the house lights. But we don't want to be what we're dealing with now where certain lighting settings affect our microphones. We want to be completely standalone, and that's what this system through KLH offers. And that's why the numbers deviate a little bit.
So yeah, with the 25% contingency, it gets you around 56,000.
Okay, so the, apples to apples is if network reliability, just so the council knows, if network reliability and a brighter projector are top priorities, Bradley Electric might be the safer option. If cost, better warranty, and enhanced audio coverage matter more, Signal Solutions offers better long-term value. So those are the two things we're up against, obviously price. And we're looking, you say Signal Solutions has a direct tie into all of our internet?
Signal Solutions is a vendor through KLH. They're hiring them through KLH is the ones that we hire. They're our IT, contract IT company. Signal Solutions would be the ones doing the work. The only difference, or one of the main differences of these contracts is that the warranty on the work being done is lifetime, which is on that, in our quote, because KLH is going to maintain the equipment forever. Or that other quote, we didn't have that. It's one of the key differences.
When you say lifetime, is that?
Lifetime, probably, that we have KLH as our vendor.
Yeah, if you have KLH as a vendor long-term, right? So I mean, lifetime could also, is that, does that mean just one year for labor? And then the parts are one year also, or what's lifetime?
That's a good question. I wouldn't be able to answer that without contacting them.
So just to throw that out there, that's, there's some nuances based on wording, what we're getting in the end, and based on the complications we've had up to this point, I think it behooves the council to make a educated decision when we approve or disapprove of this.
So what are the, other than the warranty, what other questions do you have right now on it? Just so I can?
I mean, it looks, it looks pretty much apples to apples to me. So it's just based, based on everything that's presented. It's just what the council wants to move forward with.
And that's how I felt about it as well. And I heard about the warranty today, so that's kind of new and added to what I'd already thought in my head to, I was thinking to approve on my own. So that's, I was, I'm on board with the 45 with the, what's it called, the something solutions?
Signal Solutions.
Signal Solutions, sorry.
I mean, realistically, the quote's from Signal Solutions, but the contract we'd be signing is through KLH.
Yeah, let's go through everybody real quick.
Well, so does that mean KLH, like, we have KLH now, correct? And we've seen what's gone on with everything here, you know, up to this point. No, Mike's not working and this and that. And so is KLH going to be, do we have somebody when we come in here for a meeting and we, for some reason, something doesn't work? Do we have an on-call person we can call and say, hey, guess what?
Exactly, because they set up, if they set up the equipment and they maintain the equipment, we can call their help desk if something happens. I will say to their credit, the only reason the meeting worked the last, or semi-worked, is because of KLH.
Okay, gotcha.
I can very much say every meeting would be canceled if we were solely supportive by CPAC.
That was my question.
No offense to you guys, you guys are doing your job up there as far as the AV technicians. But the issues we are having, we have our, we've had our, I worked with our finance director to get our representative from KLH, she comes once a week. We switched his dates to Wednesday so that he can come in here, and he's in here about an hour every meeting, before every meeting, to ensure this stuff is working.
Good, as long as we?
That's the only reason we've only been floating is because of KLH.
As long as we got an on-call because we were getting dangerously close to canceling meetings. And then, you know, the crowd takes their time to come in and see what's going on in Cloverdale and sit here. So it was embarrassing for the council. I just want to make sure we've got somebody that, he's our number, we call and say, hey, guess what? It's not working.
I agree. And another important aspect, if I can interject really quick, is that because we're going with a standalone system through them, which was one of the council's goals, is that should we decide in the future that the relationship with CPAC or this venue is not where we want to continue to host these meetings, we can pack up everything, we already own everything, and we set it up somewhere else with people who've already set it up once before. We're not relying on having to buy new things, like we're using their house speakers, we're using their house, we don't use these house lights. But, you know, different cables and things, we're kind of intertwined with them. And this would make us standalone for future succession planning if necessary.
And yeah, this has been something that we've all kicked around with Kevin for a while. And it would be Nick that would be working with from KLH?
Nick has been definitely a part of it. He's not their primary, it's a gentleman named Chris. I don't know his last name off the top of my head, but Nick is a big part of, what is it? Chris Jones? And he's set these up with their, with their vendor for other jurisdictions. So he's definitely has experience. But Nick's going to be a part of it, the entire thing. That was something that I was pretty adamant on. Since Nick's going to be maintaining it, I want him to be there every step of the way. I want him to know where every cable is, everything that's city-owned. And we're also going to be marking it differently. So we're not like, this cable runs to this thing, it's going to be taped or something that's, city of Cloverdale, don't touch it.
I like the fact that we're working with KLH, who we already have a relationship with. You know, we definitely kicked around some of the ideas as, you know, do we maybe get a third party to look at this and replace part of the thing? I think a complete overhaul is what we need. You know, we're just kind of kicking the can down the road. So if we do overhaul the system with this proposal, I do support it. And I think that moving forward, it's going to allow us to move our system, and we know, will know our system. And if, as is, I do like it. If we wanted to maybe table this, I would be open to that too, if you want to.
If there's aspects of the other proposal, or there's things that we, like, I don't know how KLH works with their vendors, but if we'd rather work with the other vendor because they had a different proposal. Their proposals are a little different, but I think they're open to it. I just caution the council that regardless of your decision, especially if you table it, it's going to be at another meeting, another month, another week, that this stuff doesn't get fixed, as long as you're okay with that.
So who's our contact? Is it with KLH or?
KLH will be our contact. We don't, we won't work with Signal Solutions directly. That's just the quote that they sent us.
I do like the KLH proposal.
What's the turnaround on parts, on getting all the stuff to hook it up?
I sent them an email, like, once we get it approved to use this budget, because we couldn't sign, we can't sign a contract until you approve whether we can utilize this much budget or not, and if you're okay with the contract. They estimated about a month. So it's going to be a little while anyway before all the equipment comes in. But some of it, they were in here today, working on different aspects of the equipment that they've noticed hasn't been operational, and they've not understood what, they fixed our firewall today, a bunch of internet things.
Well, I know of two other people that came in here, looked at the system, and their bids were higher than these. No one wants to spend this kind of money, but it works, it's kind of, we're stuck. And so we're getting the best bang for our buck, I think, to go on the route we are. One thing I would want to ask is that you really clarify the warranty before we go any further with it. I'm going to open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments about this? Seeing none, let's bring it back up here. If there's any clarifying comments or questions or concerns, otherwise, anyone have a motion on this?
I agree. I think it's important to clarify the warranty.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like discussion to come back to council once we have information? Or is it something that you want to go to the, an admin subcommittee? Or is that within Kevin's right to approve? You're going to be the one signing the contract, so I want to make sure that you guys have an informed decision.
Because we could make a motion to choose one right now. And that's, go ahead.
The only thing that's on the agenda tonight is the budget amendment. The contract amount is lower than Kevin's signing authority, so that wasn't before the council night. I'm sure if you expressed your desires, the city manager would listen to you. But there's no need to provide direction on that unless the council has specific direction other than to?
I think we've given pretty good direction. But what I would look for then is a motion for the budget amendment. If someone wants to so make it.
I have a move to approve a resolution to amend the budget to increase the authorized expenditure of PEG funds for public meeting audiovisual equipment in the amount of $66,227.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. All right, with that, we will move into new business. H1, direction regarding installation of crosswalk on Jefferson Street near Jefferson Elementary School. This is Kevin.
I can start, and Derek's going to come up. We did have a, or the school city subcommittee, where one of the topics was the discussion of safety issues around the school. And the topic of sort of a mid-block crossing on Jefferson Street came up. And after kind of a long discussion about it, we decided to bring it to the full, council member Morgan Stern requested that this be before the full council. Derek has some ideas, so we'll just let him go. And we did inform the school that this would be heard tonight. So that's, I'm sure some folks are here to talk about that.
Yeah, so we got a request from the school. And you'll see in your packet, we have kind of an outlay in that picture in the back of the proposed crosswalk area. They did bring it to the subcommittee. We let them know that it's not advisable for us to just paint crosswalk without, conforming to ADA code. But we, Marjorie wanted to bring this to the council and do a full discussion to get direction on permanent and temporary mitigation for this spot. We can move forward with getting a scope for putting in the ADA amenities in the crosswalk. In the meantime, you know, it is in our purview to paint red curbs in the area, try to mitigate people crossing that section of road. They've temporary, you know, speed deterrents, flashing lights, things like that. So we're just going to bring it here to, so everyone can discuss and get input on temporary and permanent solutions for this.
We have some ideas on things that would be cheaper and easier that we would suggest we do before entertaining the idea of the crosswalk. The crosswalk, you know, technically, we should probably have an engineer, traffic engineer, look at that and give us at least a memo or a heads-up. Like, it would work, it's safe. That's normally what we would do. But Derek has some ideas that we'd like to suggest we try prior to the crosswalk. And so that's kind of, I think, what we're looking for direction. If we want to proceed with the crosswalk, we probably would need to have an engineer take a look at that and draw something up, and so?
Have you presented these to, like, Principal Holden, who's here?
Yeah, she was here at the subcommittee meeting.
Okay. And what, Michelle, do you mind? Can I ask you to come up? And I mean, I think that we should hear from you as well, to hear your ideas and thoughts and why we're at this point.
Yes. Good evening, I'm Michelle Holden, I'm the principal at Jefferson Elementary School. And I did put together, just in reflecting our discussion at the committee meeting, just some of our thoughts is that, first of all, we appreciate you taking the time to focus on North Jefferson. After going back to that area, I'm noticing we don't have anything. Like, we don't even have school signs, it's a school zone. So in my approach to requesting a crosswalk, it might have been a little narrow-minded. Anything, anything going forward would be greatly appreciated just to bring to the community's awareness that, you know, it is a school zone. We have daily field back there, and we also have games and things like that. And when we were actually, spent some time in the back, and Mr. Senestrero has spent some time in the back in the morning and at the end of the school day. And there are probably 20-plus families that use that area currently because we have construction. But also, we kind of want to encourage families to use that area because it's a great way to mitigate some of our intense traffic in the front of the school as well. So some of the things that we came up with just in brainstorming beyond the crosswalk, which sounds very cost prohibitive, school signage, posted speed limits, pavement markings for visibility, I know we had mentioned some bump kind of a thing. And then clear sightlines without obstructions, which, that, we are struggling with that a little bit as well. And then any radar speed signs or trailers with flashing messages or anything like that would be greatly appreciated, just the consideration in doing that. So, yeah.
So a quick question. With the new design of the gates and things that you have along the private road, when people come out, do they use the corner gate? Or are they coming down the sidewalk? Are they using the gates on the, what would be on the north end, where they kind of put in that temporary road? I don't know what?
Yeah, so I would say this school year specifically, we have a lot of families using that daily gate. The previous year, we didn't have that open because it's a little bit, we have a lot of cars coming out that way, we have the bus coming out. So we were using, I call it the north gate. And that's consistently used specifically from the Venezia kind of neighborhood. We opened that up two years ago, and we have a good stream of families coming in there. Not as much crossing the street, but in our school site council, there's been consistent pressure to bring this issue to the council in terms of any safety support in crossing the street and using that daily area.
And then, I know you guys used to have a plan for traffic routes. Is that still something that you guys are using, working on with the new TK area? Where you have a directional for all the traffic to come in and out to help?
That's a great question. I am not familiar with any historical plans for traffic. I do know in, with our early learning center, we will have one. So if you're familiar with the old turnout, what will happen is the early learning center will have an additional turn-in, but we'll use the same pathway going out to north. So there won't be, our concern was there would be additional traffic on Venezia, but all the traffic will stream out to north. And then our encouragement will be left only so that there's a clear crossing area for families because that alleyway, many, many, many of our families use that. So if we direct traffic off to the left, back to Cloverdale Boulevard, then that will give a real safe area for our students there.
Thank you. Let's go through everyone. Sorry, I just, because I've done that, I wanted to see, get those in.
Okay, so I see Mike's been going up and down the street there. I saw, was it south of the alley, there's already a crosswalk, it looks like going north and south. You're looking to go east and west?
You know, that is a suggestion. And I think, just going back and doing some research on how many families are using, crossing from, what is that, the west side of North Cloverdale to the school? And there's a fair amount of families. I wouldn't say it's incredibly significant. But it just raises a bigger issue that currently, when I go out and I use the little stop sign, there's nothing there. There isn't a sign, there isn't a school zone, there isn't any, anything that would inform somebody driving through there that there's a school or that there's any exiting or anything, or entering that's happening there.
So the corner of, that's on the corner of Champlain and Jefferson that he's talking about?
Yeah, in the back, on the back side, right? So there's no marking currently that says it's a school zone at all?
I went, there's, there's a sign in the front of our school that's turned the wrong way. That's the only signage.
Yeah, I think, I think we're deficient in that. Yeah, right there.
North to south?
Yeah, right there. So it looks like we already have ADA ramps there. So are you looking to go this, the other side of the street? Like, the way that crosswalks go on, say that's north and south, you're looking to go?
West to east?
Yeah.
Yeah, headed the other way. Crossing there, yes, from west to east, or east to west.
On the north side of that, so they originally wanted it on the north side of, I'll just call it Viscayeno's driveway. So that would be?
Well, I would think if you keep going down that street there, Mike, to the right, no, 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 to the right where the crosswalk is, no, no, go back. no, 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 to the right where the crosswalk is, no, no, go back. So if, based on the new laws, if you're at a crosswalk, what is it, 20 feet back or something like that, so if you go to where that is, the neighbors might have a problem with that, but if you go right there, that might be more advantageous to the neighborhood. I don't know about that one car parking there, but it looks more open than right outside your alley. That's just talking out loud. That might be, you know, you're going to encroach on parking right there and then they'll have to park. People might have issues with that, obviously, but there's got to be somewhere in there where we can mitigate that.
And just to your point, I think when we were talking and you had brought up how much we would have to paint red to support that ADA ramp, it would almost be parking prohibitive because it would take away so much space.
I like some of the ideas, like dots and more signage. That's my thought, because I think a crosswalk would like take away more parking and be very expensive. So if we could figure out other things to do that would help, that would be great.
Kind of the same way on that. I mean, the obvious thing here is, if you mentioned a couple of times, there's no signage, no school zone, no anything. So, I mean, the people in Cloverdale know that's a school zone, but I don't think that stops them. So I think working with Derek before getting into a traffic study and ADA requirements and all of that, if we worked with the city and getting some signage and like council member Morgan Stern was saying, maybe a speed bump or a small one or temporary speed bump in there or something, and see if the school's happy with that. If that doesn't pan out, then we go the other route, but at least it gives you some signage there and lets people know what's going on over there. Would you be happy with something like that?
That'd be, that'd be great, and I'd be happy to monitor that for the next couple of years and see how that goes.
Thank you.
I would add on to what my fellow council members have said, you know, signage, you know, painting some of the curbs red there. Is that an option for the east side of North Jefferson between North Street and Champlain? Would that create a kind of more open sightline?
There is, and I think we talked a little bit about this, there's, there is a, there's red painted and then a driveway.
Yep.
And then there, I believe, is the rest of that painted red? I can't, I can't remember. But that, there is a fair amount of parking in there. I think it's possible there could be more red painted there.
I think so. I know, you know, when I've driven by sometimes that part of the street is empty, you know, where people are parking in front of their houses on the opposite side of the street. So if that can open some sightlines, you know, signage and the threat to people's safety is kind of a traffic issue, maybe some traffic enforcement as well.
And I would just add one other thing, and this is really coming from neighbors that have communicated to us, is there's an interesting straightaway downhill speed issue in that area. And so I think to your point, like a speed bump or some sort of bump or whatever.
The half domes that are at the high school worked really well when we first put them in. It really, because your cars kind of get squirrely if you're going too fast.
Right, yeah.
And so 15 and under is about where it holds right, and they actually worked really well. They're starting to fade off now, but I think that that's a great start to mitigate personally. Let me open it up to public.
Thank you.
And, thank you. I really appreciate this. Anyone in the audience want to make any comments, please?
Do I need to say my name or anything?
Yes, please.
My name's Amanda Harrington. I have three children that currently attend Jefferson. We walk to school every day. Every day we walk to school. I know this is more about the Jefferson, but I'm going to talk about the Boulevard. Weekly, Pat is in situations where she is having cars run that stop sign every week. The week before school start, I had my daughter starting Jump Start. My son came within three feet of someone not paying attention at the stop sign. And I know that's a driver-specific issue, but if we could have something that's making, I know you've got lights and there is, the signage is there, the lights are there. So I appreciate that being installed, but there needs to be just something else because people are still running the stop sign. People are not paying attention to a crossing guard in the middle of the crosswalk with a vest and a stop sign. It's insane that every week she has to do this. She's a volunteer, not paid. From my understanding, there was a stop sign put in to kind of replace her. It's, that's not enough. We have too many close calls. It's gotta, there's gotta be something. We appreciate the officers when they're there because it's, it does help, but we need a little bit extra because it's, I would hate for one of these kids to get hurt in order for it to be brought more attention.
Thank you, Amanda. I know it's not quite the topic here, but we agree with you. And I know that Public Works has worked on different ways, that's why everything keeps getting added. It wasn't to replace, it was to add in addition to, because I was on that committee at that time. And I know that the lights were the next thing, and we've also talked about different setbacks on turn lane versus stop sign, and so there's more visibility of people in the crosswalk and things like that. And I know Derek and the Public Works crew are working on that right now. So please know we are doing something, it just doesn't happen overnight. And we're doing all, and another part, the crossing guard, I think I was on the school board for about 10 years, and we had this position open the entire 10 years, I could never hire anyone. So it's very difficult to fill, it's not by lack of trying. Boosted pay, tried to mix in hours, it was a very difficult thing, that's why we're lucky we came up with a volunteer. And I know the city also has tried to put in money and do things. We're always looking for suggestions. If you want to come to those meetings with different ideas, we are very welcome to it.
Pat has, I've been in the school now, this is my fifth year with my kid, Pat has been there.
Yeah.
Since I have my kid in school, and she is there every single day.
She's amazing. Absolutely. Thank you for your time on that. Derek, do you want to?
Yeah, so the, like the stop sign, you're speaking towards the Boulevard and the North Street. Yeah, that's been a problem for a while. We do have quite a bit of lights and amenities there. We can employ like a rumble strip, kind of like the Bots Dots padding that's at the high school.
We talked about those, and they'd also talk about the white lines that they put in that you can feel, and they're bumping.
Yeah, that's the rumble strips, and we can thermoplastic those down. And then we can definitely put all the, the school zone thermal on the ground, the red painting, and employ some of those rumble strips and go from there, if that's what you like.
Okay, yeah. I think this is great. We got a couple more questions up here, go ahead.
You know, one of the thoughts, you know, I don't think it's people from out of town that are really causing a lot of these traffic issues, it might be local people. So, you know, could traffic enforcement really mitigate this problem? You know, it's probably, you know, what I'm hearing is it's kind of a few offenders. Certainly in my young age, you know, it's one thing that got me into driving safely was a couple tickets. So, I know this might be a question for, for the chief, just kind of, is there any record of ticketing going on in the area? And, yes?
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
For the record, he said yes.
I just want, I know the city's working on this, and Amanda, we, I mean, I was going to say this entire council is, is for the safety of the kids, and we're watching constantly and watching cars around, we know, so thank you for bringing it up. Keep it, keep it active. But what I'd like to do on this is run this to the infrastructure subcommittee again, and really gets, get into, you know, do a little deeper dive into this one and figure out what we can and can't do and what spots. Not only maybe this spot, if there's anyone, other ones that come up, how we can mitigate it, because my main goal is the safety of these kids, and, you know, they're, they're nonstop up and down the Boulevard, they're on every street. And I don't want to flood the town with speed bumps, but there is some areas that really need some stuff to slow these guys down. And there is three or four or five offenders out there that aren't going to stop at things, and they're ripping down, so anything we can do to mitigate it, I'd love to see this at the infrastructure and hammer it home a little better.
Yes, that's a good idea. We'll put that on the infrastructure.
And with, with the North Street and Boulevard, I think narrowing that intersection down a little bit is going to help coming off the hill because you have pretty much two lanes coming into there. At some point, there was white striping put on the ground to kind of narrow that, backing that up with some type of physical object that narrows that traffic down, really slows people down. So we'll, we'll come back to the subcommittee with something like that, too, on both sides.
So you have some good ideas that you can, you don't have to wait for infrastructure subcommittee to make decisions, you can, there's things that you can try and will help mitigate right now. One of the other things that we had talked about a couple of years ago, I guess, at this point, maybe a year and a half, was the turn lane, where you're facing northbound, turn left onto North Street from the Boulevard, setting it back about 10 feet so that you have more vision of the actual crosswalk. Because they said cars are blowing through and not seeing people crossing, coming, that'd be west to east.
Right.
And so maybe setting that, that back a little bit or something was another idea that was brought up back then that I thought was actually kind of good.
Yeah.
But no, it sounds like you're going to get on stuff, you guys are going to discuss it, the next one to see what else we can do. Good direction. Anything else? Holden, anything?
I appreciate your efforts and keep this all around the school, especially infrastructure.
Please go to the infrastructure subcommittee if you guys have time, have the ability, and, and make sure that we don't forget or we don't miss something because we're 100% on board with you guys.
And there's not a bad idea. So if you've got one, and don't be afraid to spit it out, we can just sit and talk about it and come to some type of resolution on this.
I love that you said spit it out.
Yeah.
Thank you guys so much.
I appreciate your commitment.
Always. What is it, 16 years now, Michelle?
Right.
My gosh. All right. Are we, are we good with the direction for everybody? All right. Moving on to H2, Resilient Cloverdale's scope of work for fiscal year 25, '26, and consider authorizing a $10,000 funding allocation and budget amendment.
Chief, you want to come up? I can, this is a budget amendment. I think back in April, Becky gave us an update on all the activities that Resilient Cloverdale was, was commencing and working on. At that time, she had a budget request, the direction from the council was to sharpen the pencil and bring it back, and that's where we are now, and she's been handling this, so turn it over to Chief.
Correct. I'm really going to introduce Becky. She's going to come up and, you know, give you all the information you need. She did a presentation, I think February-ish, of all the work they've done, and she can elaborate on that here. We know she's not afraid of a microphone.
That's right.
I think my sweatpants, not thinking I had to get in front of y'all, so.
It's all right.
Apologize.
Slouches can talk to.
Yeah. So Becky Ennis, Resilient Cloverdale, nice to see all of you again. So yeah, wanted to outline a little bit more about what the expenses were for, and just as an example, you know, we are currently, I'm working on getting more evacuation door tags. And as you can imagine, from the time that we did the initial order, a few thousand back in '21, the cost of paper now has gone up tremendously. So, you know, some of this is just reflected of that increase in cost, but also to the previous agenda item with Diana Holmesy and some of that community branch outreach and the EOC and EOP planning process, you know, we're really getting a lot of traction right now in being able to improve the overall disaster resilience of the community of Cloverdale. So I do think that this is just a small increase from what we are already receiving, but very helpful in being able to keep our costs under control.
Questions?
Start down here? Nothing? Vice Mayor?
I just want to say thank you very much. I'm sorry, I apologize, I haven't been at the last two meetings, been Tuesdays, aren't working out, but I'm kind of watching and seeing what's going on on that, this EOC program. I've talked to Daniel and his, her, what was her name? Diana?
Diana, sister.
I've met with them. This is a huge program for Cloverdale, not just for Cloverdale, but for anybody that's fire-prone. I mean, it tells or disaster-prone. It really organizes the community and turns chaos into something where people are safer. So, one, thank you for guys, you guys putting in for this. It's also, we've got a lot of the city guys that are jumping in, they know their roles now, and that's going to be huge when, when we've got people working on trying to evacuate or something like that. So thank you, I appreciate it, and I'll try to make the meeting on Tuesday.
Okay. Nice.
I'm good. Planning and preparedness is what keeps us safe, and you guys have done an amazing job, probably better than anywhere else in this county.
We think so.
I do, too. I've been part of this for a long time, and you guys are doing an amazing job. And seeing what happened at the prior fires and knowing that our community can feel good knowing that they can get out in a certain way, at certain times, and that we're looking out for them, it's amazing. It's worth every penny. Is there any one in the audience who make any public comments regarding this? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dice. Does anyone want to read a resolution?
To make a.
Would you like to make them, yeah?
Yep. Make a move to approve the Resilient Cloverdale's scope of work for fiscal year 2025 and '26, and authorize a $10,000 funding allocation and budget amendment to the fiscal year 2025 to '26 budget.
Second.
That's not how it was written, he read it exactly how it was written.
Additional.
To authorize an additional $10,000?
That better?
Yeah. Second.
All right. We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Becky, Chief, thank you guys for being here for this.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for working to keep our community safe.
Yeah, and if I might just, heard to me as while you were voting, but, you know, to your point about being one of the more forward cities and towns in Sonoma County, you know, right now, both myself and Daniel are having conversations with the city of Petaluma, and they're very much seeing what's happening up here. And so our hope is to kind of bookend 101 and bring the city of Santa Rosa and Petaluma into this world to understand how to do it right. So just putting that out there as a little teaser.
Well, we know a lot of people that could talk about the Coffee Park traffic jams and things that went down, so we don't want that, we want to make sure everyone gets out orderly and safe and you're doing it, so thank you. All right. We'll move on to the next one, H3, response to 2024-2025 Sonoma County Civil Grand Jury Report, Animal Services in Sonoma County Separate and Not Equal.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, per the state law, we are required to respond to the grand jury investigations and reports. We do contract with the animal, North Bay Animal Services. Chief has been working on renewing their contract right now. I'm going to rely on Chief to give his take on our experience with, with the services. I can say that the other cities, city managers at the city managers' meeting, this item was brought up, and most of them were pretty happy with the services. They said, yeah, there could be some things better, but they were pretty happy with it. I think the other option really for animals control services is the county, which is a lot more expensive. There is a resolution, so we did write a response, and if you feel free to, you know, make any changes if you'd like, we do have to get it in by the end of this week, I think is the, is the 60-day time. So we are hoping to get this approved tonight so we can submit it. But, you know, they made some certain findings, inconsistent rabies vaccinations, shelter maintenance. I know the chief did tour the shelter, didn't find that to be a problem, so you can talk about that if you want, Chief. Failure to attract dog bites as required, low licensing, and lack of standard data collection across jurisdictions. And as, since we were named in this, we are, we are obligated to write our response, which is in the packet. Chief, I don't know if you had any more to add to that?
Yeah, so in the, in the report, I was interviewed for, for the grand jury. And in the report, it says that only, out of the cities that they interviewed or have contracts with, and there was only one person that went to the facility. You can guess who that was. I was a little concerned about the report, obviously. It was, for me, reading it, it was a little skewed against NBS for some reason, but they made a lot of assumptions. And when you're doing an investigation, you want to back it up with data, right? Or data or some physical evidence. A lot of what their findings were, were just kind of, they were told this, they were told that, and there were no, nothing substantive. You know, and in the report, they state that, you know, the Sonoma County Animal Shelter was underfunded and behind in $2 million unpaid service fees. If that isn't mismanagement, I don't, really, I don't know what that, you know, so it's a little, I can go on and on, but, so we were kind in the response.
You know, so it's a little, I can go on and on, but, um, so we were kind in the response. They asked for a task force in there. The task force, they described it with, they had it before and it failed, and they want to bring it back, which I'm fine with. So my, obviously, the concern I have is who, what, to be on this task force that oversees the animal shelters in Sonoma County. What are, what are the, what's the training requirements or expertise that you need to be on that? What's the time commitment? Uh, we would be glad to be a part of it, but please explain that to me. And then, uh, in, also, they wanted us to do like a checklist of the facility during an inspection. Well, I say, okay, well, that'd be a perfect job for the task force to come up with a checklist for the county so that everybody's doing a standardized checklist and going to the facility. So I did meet with Mark, the owner. I did, I did a tour, I didn't find anything. Uh, the, the dogs and animals were treated well, their, their pens were cleaned, their water and food. You know, I didn't, uh, I didn't find anything out of the ordinary. I sat and talked with Mark about the the findings and the. And I just, I found out that the Sabatito chief was just there the day before me, uh, talking to him. I had, I had, uh, talked to the Sabatito chief after that, and there was, I, he didn't see anything, any issues there. So, um, my experience with animal, their animal control, um, has nothing been professional. They called, when we've called, they've come out. We've only, um, uh, in contract with five, with them for five days a week. We can call them on day six or day seven, they still come out, there's no additional fee, they haven't charged us any additional fees for that, and they have. Uh, they come out in the middle of the night, um, to do, you know, they've been out getting cats out of storm drains and a whole host of different things that. There was a dead deer in, uh, in the open space, had to go down in the creek and get that out. But you, they, you know, they're, they're great. In the, in our subcommittee, um, it was requested, um, in their new contract, because our contract is up, that we, uh, they account for their time to see, you know, so when they come out, what, how much time are they spending here on a call, uh, patrolling the city, um, doing the leash law, and different things throughout, throughout our city? And what's the response time? Because we really don't have a trigger, a mechanism for that. If we use our system, they would have to call us when they come or when they leave. And the other thought was to give them a radio, they can go over the radio, um, in service in in Cloverdale responding to this call. They do handle some calls over the phone as well. So, uh, I, they are, look, they are operating out of Petaluma, um, which is a concern. My main concern for that, with that is, is, uh, when we get a dog, a, a, a found dog or a pet, and they come and pick it up, they take it back to their shelter. So our residents would have to go there to pick it up. So when we do that, to try to mitigate that, we, we put it on Facebook, we, we found this dog. So we try to mitigate it before it gets to that point, so that the person can come to the police department, pick the dog up, and we have, um, some cages and stuff for, for animals and food and stuff for, you know, for that purpose, so to accommodate our, our residents. You know, so I, I, that's, that's pretty much it. I don't know if you have any questions for me, but, um, I did purposely hold off, with putting the contract through until this was done, so.
Thank you, Chief. Let's go down the line.
I got one question, Chief. So do they just react? Are they a reactionary force, basically? When someone calls, they come? They're not out there, say, like, just for instance, the, uh, on every Sunday, the farmer's market says no dogs. You can go walk down there every Sunday, there's always dogs in the farmer's market.
Yeah.
So it's, it's kind of one of those things. Who's enforcing that?
Yeah, that would be the security staff that, for, for Friday Night Live that does that, or supposed to do that. They, they wouldn't do that. They do, they would come out and patrol the parks and address people with their dogs off-leash. Uh, the previous council members didn't want to be overhanded and start citing people. So they just, uh, they tried to be, you know, a little more informational, hey, you need to put your dog on leash, you know, there's a leash law. So, um, yeah, so they're, they're, they do do some patrolling, not a whole lot, but they're more, they are more reactionary to, hey, we have a call for service, uh, go to this, like the, the dead deer or whatever.
Are they, are they mobile or are they coming out of Petaluma every call?
They're mobile.
Yeah, I, I think, I think they have an office in Windsor, but I'm not certain of that.
Thank you.
Hey, Chief, real quick, do they just handle like found dogs or do they handle animal complaints too?
They do handle animal complaints, um, in fact, they were handling, um, I'm not gonna say the address, but a, a, a loud dog barking complaint that was just ongoing. And so they, they've dealt with that, they've dealt with, uh, people having too many animals, um, roosters.
I guess my concern is, and I think we're probably talking about the same dog barking, most likely. And I, and the reason I'm bringing it up is I've had a whole slew of neighbors come over, so I actually made a call to them, and I was told, you can't do this online, you have to drive to Petaluma and physically fill out the paperwork before we come up. It didn't make any sense to me, and I thought, really? Okay.
That doesn't make sense.
Okay.
And I, I would urge, people have called me to complain about different things. And I always, I just, I just called the owner and said, hey, what's going on with this? And he would explain to me, you, you, this, that, and the other.
Yeah.
And then sometimes he would actually handle it personally and come out, so.
Just wanted to make sure.
We have a good relationship.
Yeah, if people had, do have those complaints they don't have, it's just like going down to retrieve your lost dog in Petaluma. I mean, that puts a lot of people out when it's just, could be a quick phone call, you know, so.
Yeah, I've looked at using, um, if you go into the corp yard, there's that little shed there. Looked at using, using that to kind of house dogs and, and things, which, you know.
All right, let's open up to the public really quick. Anyone have any questions or comments regarding this item? Seeing none, it was good to hear that it was more positive, uh, for us than it was for others, but.
Generally, at the city managers meeting, they said they were good with the animals, but they probably need a little more help on the admin side, but they, most of the cities here were, were pretty happy with the services being provided.
It's usually how it works when you're underfunded. Okay, so with this one, it is a resolution. Do we have anyone?
Uh, motion to adopt a resolution entitled Response to 2024-2025 Sonoma County Civil Grand Jury Report, Animal Services in Sonoma County Separate and Not Equal.
I'd like to second that motion.
So that we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Pass is five zero, thank you. We'll move into, aye, council member reports? Go up for it.
Okay, so, um, we had the school subcommittee meeting on, um, August 19th, where we discussed the crosswalk and intersection issue. And then, um, the police chief gave a report about the school resource officer. Um, and he said, um, that he thinks that, um, by May of, I guess, 2026, we'll have somebody in the schools, but, um, the city council was adamant that we do want somebody in the schools. And I think at the police and finance meeting, we mentioned, hopefully, um, we can have somebody in the schools by 2025. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
I have nothing to report out.
Thank you, Councilmember Morgan Stern, for the update on the, uh, city school meeting. I was present there as well. Also attended the Zero Waste Sonoma meeting on August 21st. Notable item, did approve a budget adjustment and grant agreement between Sonoma County Waste Management Authority and Conservation Corps in North Bay. Conservation is, a corpse of North Bay is kind of a job corpse. They provide various waste collection management and diversion services to keep material from the landfill while creating a positive experience for the youth. Also, uh, attended the Russian River Property Owners Association Steering Committee meeting, August 25th. They did get over the threshold of 51%. They're currently at 4, 54.15% of the acreage needed to petition, uh, for LAFCO, and that would go to a, a vote if approved. And that's what I got. Thank you.
Go for it.
We had a infrastructure subcommittee yesterday, was that yesterday? Yeah, yesterday. And, uh, one of the big things that came up, uh, was, it was generally just, uh, we went through some of the standing items that were on there before, but the one thing that came up is, uh, there's a Cloverdale Sidewalk Repair Ordinance. Talked to Sarah on that, and, uh, he brought up some information. What I suggested is we not only, uh, we looked at it at Infrastructure Subcommittee, but also run it to Police and Finance. There's needs to be a lot of verbiage corrected in that. This has some pretty big implications for people and, and, uh, some, some liability issues. So I'd like to run that to Police and Finance and see what they say about it too prior to bringing it to, uh, full counsel.
All right, I'm a little more long-winded tonight, so I apologize. If you get too bored, you can leave early. Uh, first thing is the Potter Valley Project. Uh, our committee is working with several different groups, uh, including one of them being a high state level official on different water projects that are gonna help Cloverdale with our water security. Uh, the goal is to prioritize and monetize our projects. We have a list of about 21 different projects that are going to help us for when this decommissioning, when, when and if it happens. About 21 different projects that'll help Cloverdale, uh, be sustainable, and so we're pro, we're prioritizing and monetizing those. State is gonna help us with the funding for them. Uh, the state and county now recognize Cloverdale is going to have water issues and not be sustainable or safe with the Potter Valley Project happening. Further, through our discussions, P G U stated one of the transformers was bad when this all kicked off, and that was the main reason that they couldn't generate power back and had to, uh, lower the water levels. They said it was gonna be approximately $2 million. It was brought to my attention this past week that the generation system actually has a backup transformer, it's been in place the entire time. System could have been up and running at full capacity and never technically had to be taken offline or have the flows changed, and the money still could be, uh, made currently, so, uh, we're in discussions about what's going on with that portion of the truth. Uh, Cloverdale hosted the Sonoma County Mayors and Councilmembers Association last week. That's all council members, all mayors, and their city managers and anyone else that they want to bring to these dinners, every city hosts it. Uh, we hosted ours. I really want to make sure that I thank all of the city staff that put forth so much time to make it happen. It went off without a hitch, uh, other than the hors d'oeuvres not being there, the free hors d'oeuvres, I apologize, council member. We'll work on that one for next year. Uh, but our city staff, whether it's public work, city manager, our city clerk, everybody, you guys did an amazing job. It looked phenomenal, and I can't thank you guys enough. At the dinner, Sonoma Water presented on the Potter Valley Project to everyone. The new presentation was updated from other presentations that they had done in the past, and it showed the need for immediate answers for water sustainability, so that was nice to see them recognizing that. Uh, they've been a very good partner for the past few months, or over a year now, actually, probably. I don't think anyone is arguing the need for any type of diversion if the dams come out. However, uh, we have shown that even the minimal release during a very wet year, Mendocino still isn't full, and our river is lower than ever. Uh, I asked about water flows and the variances that the P G N E, uh, received from FERC recently. P G N E was approved to release less water than they are supposed to, and this has caused less flow on the Russian River and no water in the Potter Valley area, and the ranchers are having a very difficult time right now. Sonoma Water said the flows were the same since June. The problem is that P G N E had started doing the limited flows way before they were approved. So I proposed, also proposed another question to the panel, and I got an answer that really made me nervous, and I really think that it should make everyone nervous, uh, about the agreement with Round Valley Tribe. I asked when the entire project is done and the dams are gone, can Round Valley Tribe change the agreement on the water if they feel they don't have enough water in the Yule River? And the answer was yes. So if this all kicks off with the agreement the way it's written, they still have the ability to take our water, minimal or all. So we really need to be cognizant of that and make sure that we find some way to not have them have that clause so that we can always keep our diversion at least. Where am I, here? A, a, a lot of other council members from across the county asked a lot of questions, which was really good to hear them asking and trying to get different answers. Uh, some, um, really showed their distrust with people, which was nice to see that it's not just Cloverell up here on a little island. There was a recent meeting with the Department of Interior and a, a group of people from here all the way up into the Potter Valley, and they reported to me that it was very positive. Uh, they have a meeting this week, uh, to set up a meeting with the White House. And Potter Valley is hosting a town hall update meeting tomorrow night at 5:00 PM in Potter Valley at a place called Headwaters. Um, so when the, when and if the White House does schedule the meeting as they're planning, and the people that are going to be involved, I will report out on that as well. Last week, uh, I went to the Chamber of Commerce, I emailed them with an idea that I had, and I wanted to get their, their thoughts on it, and it grew legs, and somebody put it out on social media regarding, uh, Naxalon or Narcan. And, uh, the project was, uh, something I was working on with Alexander Valley Healthcare, St. Vincent de Paul, Micah's Hugs, and our chamber. And it was basically to reach out to all the businesses in Cloverdale and give them the, uh, ability to, to keep Naxalon in their business and have stickers for their business windows that said that they supplied that there in case someone accidentally overdoses anywhere near them or someone's looking for some way to save someone's life. It wasn't meant to go out so fast, however, what was incredible is we have over 20% of the businesses within about 24 hours were screaming, saying, we want this bad, let's go, let's do it, thank you so much. And that was nice to see our community coming together with the Chamber, uh, Alexander Valley Healthcare with, uh, Blake Manning. That, that guy's been running around, passing it out, uh, teaching people how to use it, showing them why it's safe on anyone that you can't, you can't administer it wrong, really, and you can't hurt anyone. It's a, it's a great thing that he's doing for everyone, and to see them step up with St. Vincent de Paul and, and, uh, really with, it's Michael Velazquez, and really want to, uh, make a difference for our community. Just saving one life, uh, makes it all worth it. I know the chief has jumped on board, he's, stocks it everywhere he goes. Now you're gonna see a lot of businesses popping up with access to this. And it's, it's not always, you know, just the normal person that you would think that would overdose. It, it's the kid that touches something, it touches a piece of paper on, on a shelf or something that, that has some type of fentanyl or opioid on it that makes them overdose, that they can't control and we can't control it. We want to make sure that we can keep them as safe as possible. Uh, this stuff is harmless, it saves lives. Uh, and at this point, Hillsburg called, and they said, what are you doing? We want to be part of it. So it's growing major legs now, and I love to see that. Another good thing is it's been out for about a week now, and I've only had one negative comment. Somebody here in our community thinks that it's uncivilized to not allow someone to overdose on their own. Well, good for them. I'm going to do all I can to save people's lives, because I think people want to get high or do some things accidental. I don't think anyone wants to, uh, take opioids till they die. And I think that it is, uh, unbecoming of us to not try to save someone's life, no matter who they are or what their thoughts are on that. So I'm sorry to that person for not, uh, following along. But Nina, Savannah, the Vice Mayor, all the businesses, Blake Manning, Michael Velazquez, I can't thank you guys enough for making this happen. Micah's Hugs, those guys are amazing. If you don't know who they are, you should really look up their story and why they exist, and that's why we're all doing this, is so that what they had to go through as a family, we don't have to go through. Our public, public works crews have been killing it lately. Their, the new organization that we have going on is really more productive and positive, and it's showing that this team style that we have here in Cloverdale really works a lot better than the prior system. Um, I see the roadwork and the striping and the repairs and everything else that you guys are doing, and I can't thank you enough. You guys are really doing a great job, and everybody has smiles, they're loving work. It's, it's amazing when I hear some of these supervisors say that they have to make the employees go home. You know, it's great, that, that's, that tells me a lot about the family that they're creating. The other day, I, I received a text message about a loose bolt on a swing. It was like 6 o'clock at night. So I texted a picture to one of our supervisors, and I said, hey, just a heads up. 8 o'clock at night, I get a text, it's fixed, we'll go back through and make sure everything is fixed on the, everything tomorrow. But they went at night on their own and made sure it was done, and that's amazing to think that they care that much about our community and our kids and, and our, our town, so thank you guys again. Next one, Cloverell P D, thank you for your persistence on the 288. 288, uh, P C is Luden Lucivius acts with a child under the age of 14 by a man that was 56 or 57 years old. or 57 years old. So, it's good to not have those people on our streets or in our homes. And thank you for your persistence to make sure that person gets, got put where he needed to be for now. We just picked up two new student liaisons today before this meeting, so I'm excited to have them here. September 10th is our next meeting that they will be part of, hopefully. Brilliant, brilliant girls and I look forward to them being here and definitely testing their knowledge and their wit. Last thing, the car wash, the property actually signed and closed yesterday. They are applying for a demo permit probably by the end of next week. So, it is really moving forward. As we were sitting here, we're getting emails about it. So, this is amazing for Cloverdale and thank you from the bottom of my heart to this entire city for making this stuff happen. That's the end of my report. Told you it was long-winded. Okay. Legislative reports. I see it, is that my, is that my letter on that one?
Yes.
I didn't see that, okay. So, if you wanted to see the letter that I had written to the chamber, it is in our meeting minutes. City manager report.
Just real quick, I think everyone knows, but we're going to do a Ferber Park Playground Grand Opening tomorrow at 5:30. We've got games, giveaways and hopefully have some fun and just welcome that new addition to the park. I know people are using it big time, but we just want to have our grand opening. So, hopefully you guys can show up. 5:30 tomorrow.
Thank you. I know, Mike, that you put it out to the schools, so thank you for doing that. It'd be great to have as many kids there as possible. That's really awesome. They're the ones that, that get the best use out of it. City attorney? Nothing? Okay.